Call the meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 6, 2015. Let's start with our invocation. Pastor Andrea Brownlee, First Christian Church.
Let us pray. Creator God, we give you thanks for another opportunity to gather to do the work of this city. For this beautiful place where we live and all the blessings it provides, we lift our hearts in gratitude. We pray that a spirit of compassion and generosity, a spirit of wisdom and cooperation, a spirit of creativity and hope will fill each heart here this evening. I ask your blessing on Mayor Kritzfeld and every person working for and on behalf of the community of Oskaloosa and Mahaska County. We lift up the residents of this community as those who represent us work to make this city a better place to call home. Help us all to do what we can to strengthen our community and care for our neighbors. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
For old times' sake, Charlie Comfort, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Caliguri?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Benzetton?
Yes.
Hurstay?
Here.
Walling?
Here.
Yates?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. Ask to keep statements brief. Time is limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff or the council members or the mayor, we ask that those be asked prior to speaking to the full council so that way any concerns can be properly researched and perhaps even answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Item number five is our consent agenda. These are all items that are considered to be routine in nature, and so for that reason they tend to pass on unanimous votes. I would draw the council's attention, though, that we have four items that are noteworthy. Item I is considering a resolution that schedules a public hearing for May 4th, levying a special assessment against private property on 201 High Avenue East. It has to do with the cleanup and directing the notice to the owners of the property that are going to be assessed. Item K is resolutions scheduling a public hearing submitting an application for a USDA Rural Development Community Facilities grant, and that's for the purchase of a pump or tanker fire apparatus. Item L is the resolution allowing for disposal of city-owned equipment. I believe we've got some computer equipment. And then item M, considering the adoption of a temporary road closure resolution for 2015 street improvements and emergency closures, basically giving the city engineer the power to close streets as necessary. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
A little second.
Okay, any discussion?
On item I, where is the trash or whatever it is? Is it in the building or in the alley?
In the alley. It was in the alley, next to the trash can and above the trash can.
Is it already gone?
Yeah, well, it's been removed. That's what this action is.
I missed check, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Hurstay?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item six, this is the announcement of vacancies we have on various boards and commissions. First is the airport commission. We have one vacancy to fill. It's upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31st of 2015. It's a five-member board that typically meets on the first Monday of the month, and right now we have four males serving with one vacancy. The building code board of appeals, one vacancy to fill upon appointment to serve at the pleasure of the mayor. This is a five-member board that meets as needed, three males and one female currently serving, one vacancy. Historic preservation commission, we have one vacancy to fill. It's upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31st of 2015. It's a seven-member board that meets as needed. Currently, we have two males and four females serving, one vacancy. The library board, we have three vacancies for six-year terms that begin on July 1st of 2015, ending on June 30th of 2021. This is a nine-member board that typically meets on the fourth Monday of the month, four males and five females currently serving. And last is the planning and zoning commission. We have two vacancies for five-year terms that begin May 1st of 2015 and on April 30th of 2020. One vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on April 30th of 2017. There's a seven-member board that typically meets as needed on the second Monday of the month, four males and two females currently serving, and one vacancy. Getting into the regular agenda, first up is the request that we have from the Haskett Community Recreation Foundation, report on their quarterly activities. Floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Candace Klein, and I am the Activities Manager at Mahaska Community Recreation Foundation. I'm just going to give you a quick report over our quarterly report, which should be in your packet. Does anyone need a copy? Good?
We're good.
Okay, sounds good. So for starters, we had our annual MCRF meeting in January where we elected Doug DeCock as a new board member and also re-elected Bob Morris. Moving into recreation, we have already had two tournaments in March for William Penn University and Central College, and then just this past weekend we had another one. So things are moving along nicely. We did the Play It Forward program, which if you're unaware or unfamiliar with what that is, it's an equipment exchange program where we collect used, generally-used equipment and then let, you know, kids who need equipment come and take it. And it's been a really great project. We would like to promote it as recycling and being green. And so we were able to give 60 items away at youth registration this year, so that was a neat thing for us. Bay Ruth, Oskaloosa High School track and soccer, Little League, Mahaska County Soccer Club, all started their season and everything is going well. As far as community support, we had our fifth annual bowling tournament fundraiser, and we had lots of community support this year, which was really cool for MCRF, and it was a great thing to have Oskaloosa on our side. We definitely have grown the bowling tournament. I mean, first tournament we raised about 2,000, and now we're up to over 7,200. So that was a really good thing this year. Also hosted the Daria event in the mall this month, well, I guess in March. That went well. It was a great thing for all of, lots of activities to be done. A lot of people got to see what was in Oskaloosa, what's available to participate in. And then we also are looking to do a skate competition. We're going to start pulling our committee together to start planning that at the Oskaloosa Urban Park. So planning should start soon on that for this summer. And then we also partnered with the city. The city allows us to use their wood chipper, and Chad Rietfeldt, the facilities manager out at MCRF, and then also Kevin Mullenex with Musco, went and cleaned up some brush along the trail, which is an ongoing thing, and that went well. For the future, we are currently working on putting up a maintenance shop, thanks to a large and generous donation. And we're working closely with Akilish to make sure that we're following all policies and regulations. Stadium construction is still underway. We're working on the press box, the third and fourth floor, and also the elevator. And then tonight, they're actually having their first soccer game at the grass side of the stadium. So that's pretty cool. And then as far as future events, we have arts in April, and we are going to be doing on April 23rd at Little League games. We're going to just be having chalk available for the kids to play and keep entertained and promote arts. And then trail trim tours, we are now taking reservations, and those will start in May and end in October. Any questions?
Just one, Candace. First, thank you. Appreciate the report. Up under the bowling tournament, it said the proceeds are going towards a new playground.
Yes.
Is that something adding to the existing or completely new?
Well, currently what they're doing is they are writing a grant right now, and we're going to look at, I don't know if you've seen the flooring of the playground, but with Iowa weather expanding and then shrinking back up, it's caused some problems, so we're looking at putting some new flooring in for safety purposes. So, and then you might notice that the number was different as well. We did raise over 7,200, but in there it says 6,000. We received a nice check in the mail today from Oski Foods, and that was an extra added thousand bucks. So it was pretty cool. So, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, this is to consider an ordinance to vacate and sell 134.25 feet by 16 and 1/2 feet of the north-south alley adjacent to 815 Fourth Avenue West. First reading, and this will be a public hearing. Background, Jeff Shelton, the owner of 815 Fourth Avenue West, has requested that the portion of the north-south alley adjacent to his property be vacated. Mr. Shelton would like to purchase the land in order to maintain his property and for other aesthetic reasons. The city conducted a survey of the property owners with direct access to this alley. Among the residents that responded, total of three, two of them, Patterson-Hahn Incorporated and Mr. Shelton want the alley to be vacated, and one, M. Schrego and Son Incorporated, did not want the alley vacated. The owner of M. Schrego and Son stated that they do not want the alley vacated because they need the alley access in order to maintain their fence. This alley contains no utility infrastructure. The city council previously approved this alley vacation in 2005. However, since the quit claim deed was never paid, the alley wasn't vacated. So it went through planning and zoning, and the commission considered this item at their March 9, 2015 meeting, recommended by a vote of 6-0 that the city council approve the alley vacate request. So I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this alley vacation? Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone and name an address, please.
Jeff Shelton, 815 Fourth Avenue West, my property. I'm to vacate the alley. So if you have any questions or want to know why I want to vacate it.
Okay. Do you have any particular plans for the alley?
It grows a lot of weeds along the whole thing. It's like, you know, 10 to 12-foot tall weeds, and I just want to be able to maintain it, mow it, plant some evergreens to, you know, kind of hide the fence a little bit, and put in a water drainage system to keep water off my property from Schrego's.
Okay, okay. Would you anticipate any problems if Schrego wanted to come in and maintain the fence from that side?
No, no, I wouldn't. And just want to point out that Schregos don't own any property, or all the residential houses own property up to the fence. So I would just be just like the regular houses that own property up to the fence, and they can maintain it the same rules as they do the other properties.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Okay, thank you very much. Open hearing being what it is, is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion for approval of this vacation request?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Hurstay?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next item, item C, this is to consider the approval of a request from the Cellar Peanut Pub, 206 Rock Island Avenue for outdoor entertainment. Extend the outdoor service area, alcohol consumption outside the building premises, and a temporary variance from noise ordinance. Marty Duffy, the owner of the Cellar Peanut Pub at 206 Rock Island Avenue, has submitted a request to have outdoor entertainment extending the outdoor service area, alcohol consumption outside the building premises, temporary variance from the noise ordinance on Saturday, May 16, 2015, and that would extend from 12 o'clock PM to 1 o'clock AM. So it's a 13-hour time period. The subject property is currently zoned as an urban corridor district, which does not permit outdoor entertainment. The current land use is as a cocktail lounge where alcohol cannot be consumed outside the building premises. Alcohol consumption outside the building premises on the parking lot area violates the open container law. Oskaloosa Municipal Code does not allow for land uses similar to a beer garden where alcohol consumption is permitted outside of building premises. The liquor sales outside the building would be subject to staff verifying the dramp shop insurance, and Mr. Duffy is also requesting a variance from Oskaloosa Municipal Code, Section 9.12.040, for the noise standards. The fencing and exiting provisions will need to be inspected for the safety of the occupants, and any structures associated with the entertainment will also require permits and inspections to assure safety. In addition, vehicular parking will also need to be arranged for those attending since the present parking lot will be used for commercial recreation. If the Cloud Valve Company parking lot is used for this event, Mr. Duffy will need approval from Cloud Valve Company. So this request for the outdoor commercial recreation, the extension of the outdoor service area, the alcohol consumption in the parking lot area, and the noise variance on the commercial property all need council approval. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any conversation or discussion?
Can I ask why this is on the agenda? I mean, this has been the same thing over and over and over. I mean, isn't, I mean, we talk about trying to make this stuff easier for everybody. There has got to be a way to be able to get this done without it having to come to us every day, all day.
A couple of things. One is you have to change state law.
Because some of the things are required by state law. The second issue is that the noise ordinance is a local ordinance, the operator's requesting an exemption from that. And again, that ordinance was put into place a few years back to protect residential neighborhoods from excessive noise issues. Not saying that this is a case for that, but that's why it was put into place early on, kind of for party houses.
I guess my question to you is why wouldn't these replace the consent agenda versus into the regular agenda?
Because every time we've talked about it, it's been on a regular agenda. It's simply...
There's got to be a way that we can make this simple to people.
We'll have all these provisions been met. Have they asked Cloud, they got that parking lot taken?
I don't know. I don't know if they've talked to Cloud or not.
Marty?
Mr. Duffy, would you be willing to come to the microphone?
I have not talked to Cloud about their parking lot. That's their parking lot, and that's not my responsibility. I'm doing the motorcycle show, therefore if other cars want to park, there's roads to park on, and that's what we're at. That's, I don't believe Cloud would allow that to happen because it would be an insurance problem on their end, so I'm not going to even, they blocked it off last year, and we were fine with that. We told them if they'd like to put a barrier up so people cannot park in their parking lot, that's totally up to them.
I guess another question, I, there was two letters in here for two events. This agenda item is only asking about the one. Is there something on the second item, the one in about two or three weeks that we need to talk about?
That one's been handled administratively.
Okay, so there's no issue there?
He won't have to come before council. Trying to make it easy for him on that.
Okay. And I did speak to Mr. Parks today, which is the one that generally complains about the noise issues, and he said that he's probably going to make a plan to go to Kansas City so he didn't have to put up with you.
That's wonderful. Sounds good.
And I guess the last, is the midnight ending for the music, has that been consistent with the last few that we've done?
It's been generally 11 o'clock, but we're asking for another hour, just the fact that we will have around 500 people on the property like last year. Liquor sales were till 11 o'clock last year, and we had a little bit of a problem. You know, I had 500 people wanting beer, and at that time, we were supposed to take everybody and bring them into the pub. Well, that's impossible. So by doing this, I thought if we could extend it for an extra two hours for beer sales outside on my property would be a great thing, and then also the music, we wanted to go till midnight.
That was also a contributing reason why it was on regular agenda. It's not the exact same request as previous times.
The midnight makes me a little nervous. I think your events, you've done a good job with them, so I'm certainly willing to approve this one tonight from my perspective.
Thank you.
But either if it's too loud, we've had a little bit, or we get a lot of complaints, then future events we can look, going back to 11. But, you know, again, I hope you have a great event.
Thank you.
The late enough, that doesn't really bother me. I've got to listen to the races all summer long until 12, they get to have their...
Now, wait a minute now, don't you be putting down my race.
I'm just saying, everybody gets their turn. That's all I'm saying.
It's like, we don't do this every weekend as well. This is, we do two big events a year.
I'm not coming after your races.
I've got a technical question. Does the fence have to be orange? The way we're going with that party is, if it doesn't have to be orange, and this is unofficial, it'd be nice to have, they make it in green now, but I don't, maybe it has to be orange, because we use orange up on the square, too. You know, it makes you feel like you're in a construction project. I'm used to that.
Is the fence a requirement by us or the state, or is that your doing?
I like having it personally. It keeps, you know, minors out or people that aren't allowed.
And it's a requirement of the state.
It has to be.
A boundary. It has to be a well-defined boundary, is what they...
Okay.
Well-defined, then. That's probably why it's orange.
Okay, any other comments?
Martha Comfort, I live at 501 South Third Street, so I do hear the noise, and I don't have any problem with it because it's not that often. The last time this happened, we kind of thought as the evening went along, the singers got really bad. But anyway, I mean, like, as a member of this community, I just don't think it's a problem for the people in my neighborhood. I've never heard anybody complain because they know it's just a one-time thing, and so, he runs a great business otherwise, and so we just learned that that's the night it happened, so it's not a big deal for us.
On a separate issue, is there any way that we can get this, so he does go on consent agenda if he meets these requirements all the time, or is this always going to have to come up like this?
I mean, we keep talking about it, and we, do we, does it need to go to committee somewhere and be a proposal? Is that what you need?
No, I guess what I was, if this had been the same request as far as hours of the band, hours of liquor sales or beer sales, if it would have been the same as the last to come back to council for formal discussion. Now, last year, we did have some issues where we had to go in essentially play bouncer with our police officers. Not excited about that, but that means it probably had a good event, and it was doing well, but we don't wanna put our officers in that position every time. So I think if there's some consistency or regularity to what's gonna be requested, I don't have a problem with it, but that's what you guys wanna see.
I don't have a problem with it. There's no different-- If this was in the consent agenda and it was questions, we would typically pull it out. Just like we do anything else, we ask questions.
And that's, and if you get enough complaints about it, just pull it out of the consent agenda.
Right. Right.
So, I mean, it should be just do it the same way every time, and it's gonna be automatic.
Administration work, that's all it is.
Okay. You have a motion in a second supporting this. Roll call, please.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
First day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caljerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Can we vote on the races next?
Not on the agenda.
You can vote on them. We're still gonna have them, but they are over either at 10:30.
Right. If I get you, we're all up there.
They try. They try. Well, they usually are. Except for the front row challenge.
Back to the agenda.
Okay.
Item D is to consider a motion to approve directing the mayor to execute a professional services contract with Garden &amp; Associates for the sidewalk improvements project, which is Iowa DOT project number TAP-U-5780, left parenz 613, right parenz 81-62, in an amount not to exceed $68,356.59. Last year, the city of Oskaloosa was awarded an 80-20 matching fund transportation alternatives program, or TAP, grant for up to $232,000 worth of sidewalk improvements to be done along North Third Street, D Avenue West, North L Street, and North Green Street for the federal fiscal year 2013. On February 2nd of 2015, council approved a resolution authorizing the funding agreement between the city and the Iowa DOT for this project. The sidewalks improvements are part of Oskaloosa's Safe Routes to School program, which aims to provide students with a safe walking or biking path both to and from public schools. After city staff consideration, Garden &amp; Associates was chosen to provide the professional services for this project and prepared a professional services contract in an amount that doesn't exceed $68,356.59. This contract has been submitted to and reviewed by the Iowa DOT. Staff is recommending the council approve the motion to enter into a professional services contract with Garden &amp; Associates for the sidewalk improvements project. Do you have a motion supporting that?
Someone, second.
Okay, any discussion?
Did we check with anybody else besides Garden? Priceways?
No, we didn't do an RFQ on this.
And why?
We have not done it on other projects, and the state doesn't require an RFQ on other projects. Like, we have done Third Avenue historically. I've not done it on other projects. If that's the direction we get from staff, we can look into it, but--
What we need is to check with somebody else once in a while, get prices straight, make sure we're getting treated right.
Yeah, I think Garden's contracts have been-- And just Akilish and I discuss this regularly. They're in line with what we're seeing. He's talked to other public works engineers. They're generally in line with the same percentages. This is a little higher because it deals with the federal transportation funds, so there's more paperwork that's required for the state project. Our last STP project was completed by Garden &amp; Associates. They were the contract administrators, so they have a history of working on these with us. So, again, we've used them on just about every other project to this point, based on our previous discussions and apparent satisfaction.
I'm just curious. I see we're putting sidewalk on C Avenue East. Does that have to be served, and does that have to be engineered, too?
We did that one in-house.
In-house?
How far is that going?
Just the property length. Well, it goes from--
For a block?
Yeah, a block, essentially. That's being funded through McQuiston Trust Funds.
On D Avenue West, are we meeting up with the fair-- That old sidewalk that's there from the fairgrounds?
Yes.
Yes.
We're not gonna try to get the fair board to replace it? That doesn't look very good.
Yeah, we haven't done assessments on the existing sidewalks, but we are just connecting. This is just connecting of locations where we have gap along that kind of--
I know when we talked about the project a couple of years ago, we talked about approaching the fair board.
Because it's real narrow there, right?
Yeah. It's not only narrow, it's sunk in places, broke up in places. It seemed like it'd be an awful good time for them to replace it, but we've got the crew already there.
It's not that long a stretch.
It's about two blocks.
Yeah, we'll reach out to them.
I think we should.
We, I had an informal discussion with the fairground at one time, and I've indicated to them that it's not in good condition, so--
They're kinda tight, though. They might not wanna spend the money, but--
Kind of. At least. I'm gonna get a racist start on that.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
First day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caljerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us to item E, considering a motion to approve and direct the mayor to execute a revised professional services agreement with Garden &amp; Associates for designing the sanitary and stormwater sewer improvements near South L Street and South M Street and near Penn Boulevard, the amount not to exceed $86,000. At the March 16 meeting, council approved a professional services agreement with Garden &amp; Associates in the amount of $40,000 to complete the design work for sanitary and stormwater sewer improvements near South L Street and South M Street. In the past few weeks, additional sections of sanitary sewer in need of repair and/or relocation have been discovered near Penn Boulevard, and that's between Rosenberger Avenue and College Avenue. And then also between High Avenue West and First Avenue West near South K Street. And then there's a map that we've got that shows that. The city staff would like to recommend combining these sewer reconstruction projects with the original South L Street and South M Street project into one large project. So instead of multiple bids, the combined project would only require one bid, and in addition, the larger project may attract more interest and allow contractors to bid more competitively. The revised Garden &amp; Associates proposed contract in the amounts not to exceed those below. So we've got the original amount of $40,000, the additional preliminary and final design $33,000, and then an additional services, you know, having to do with easements, $13,000, so a grand total of $86,000. Now, this is only for the work related to design, the bid process, and the easements. The construction phase inspection services would require a separate contract with Garden &amp; Associates. Staff is recommending approval of the item as presented. Do you have a motion supporting that?
Okay.
Discussion.
What would the inspection services be cost? Do we have any idea? And has the--
20% of the project cost?
Yeah. You know, to council member Jimenez's point, I mean, about cost, it's not, maybe not necessarily about looking to other firms. We've had some internal discussions about whether or not we could hire staff and do it like we used to, have a little more design done in-house. It starts-- The numbers start penciling out for doing a couple million dollars in projects a year if you add 20%. Take 20% of that. That's pretty easy to do the math. So those are some of the conversations that we've started having a little more seriously, so--
Yeah, we're paying out a lot of money where we could have a staff member on and have that done in-house.
We did it one time.
But part of the issue is retention and recruitment, and it's all that. I mean, that's, obviously Akilish has been here, we've had a little more stability now for almost six years, so that didn't exist for times, so that's been part of the hangups there.
Does the opportunity present itself? I know occasionally we talk about doing our own inspections. I mean, this will be reviewed in this case as well, I'm assuming, or this is not--
It doesn't fit in with our existing work plans because of the other projects that we have going on. We talked about hiring a different staff member just for that, the inspection services.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caljerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
First day?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item F, considering a resolution approving award of contract for the E Avenue East and North 12th Street Reconstruction Project, De Blommer's Construction Incorporated, amount not to exceed $381,212.50. And then this would also authorize the city manager to utilize an additional 10%, or $38,000 for project contingency. So that, at the February 17, 2015 meeting, city council rejected the low bid received for the E Avenue East and North 12th Street Reconstruction Project and approved rebidding it. The initial low bid was in the amount of $506,193.05, which came in 37.5% higher than the engineering estimate. The project was then re-advertised with a later start date of August 10 of 2015, and then bids were received and publicly read on March 27. A total of four bids were received, as shown in the tab of the packet. The low bidder was Blommer's Construction Incorporated in the amount of $381,212.50, which comes in 3.6% higher than the engineering's estimate of $367,950. If the project is awarded, then construction would begin by the late start date of August 10, 2015, and the project would be substantially completed by October 30 of 2015. Anticipated duration of the project is 50 working days. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution awarding the E Avenue East and North 12th Street Reconstruction Project, De Blommer's Construction Incorporated. They also recommend authorizing an additional 10%, $38,000, as the construction contingency for unforeseen circumstances, and authorize the city manager to execute all the related contract documents contingent upon receipt and approval of insurance and bond documents. Do we have a motion to support that?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call, please.
Yates?
Yes.
Caljerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
First day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, we're getting towards the end of the agenda here. Item G, reports from city staff. City manager, anything? Okay. City clerk, anything?
No, sir.
City attorney is not even here. Okay. Okay, I did want to take a moment-- This is probably as good as any-- To reiterate some of the stuff that we're putting out in the media having to do with the spring cleanup. And so, this is an annual event that we do. It's gonna be starting on April 27 of, you know, this month. And so, starting-- It'll be running on April 27, 28, 29, and 30, starting in the southeast quadrant of the city. So if you think about Oskaloosa as being this colorful and having these quadrants, you can kinda get an idea of where it's gonna be, but we'll be starting in this southeast quadrant on the 27th, and then going to the north on the 28th, and then over to the west on the 29th, and then down again on the 30th. So, anyway, I would remind residents that on this is the day. So if you wanna start putting stuff out in the yard, don't do it before that. You're likely to get some sort of a nuisance complaint against you, and that can be expensive. So please pay attention to that these are the days that the city will be doing pickups in these quadrants. Moving on in the agenda, since it's the end of a calendar quarter, it's a good opportunity for reports from the council members and myself as to the various boards and committees we've been appointed to. I'll start. Mahaska County Conference Board, this works with the county assessor's office. We went through the budgeting process. Everything's working fine there. I did wanna let everybody know, though, that every few years, we do a flyover where we put together very high-definition pictures of Mahaska County, and that that's gonna be happening this year. And so, within probably six or so odd months, maybe eight, after this, we'll have some, a new set of pictures that we can work with for the planning that we do. And those pictures get used by the county assessor's office with software that will take the pictures from three years ago, compare it to the picture now, and then tell you if anything has changed. Buildings that are there and weren't there, expansions that have taken place, that sort of thing. Very sophisticated stuff, and very fast. But anyway, want to at least let you all know that we've got that happening. Next on the list, 911, Tom Walling, anything?
Randy Fraser is getting ready to retire. Randy's been on 911 a long time. So we're working on a committee to interview and hire a new director, so that's in the process. And there's also gonna be a discussion, we're meeting again Thursday night, looking at the 2018 legitimacy of it needs to change. That's it.
Okay. Enterprise Zone, that's you, Doug.
Mayor, we have not met in the last three months, so nothing to report on.
Okay. Housing Trust Fund, that's you, Joe.
Today, nothing to report on.
Okay. This is getting faster as we go. Oskaloosa Chamber Development Group, I pointed myself to that. Busy stuff going on. Today was one of those days where Oskaloosa represented itself quite well at the state Capitol. We had-- The folks from Orchestra were there in the rotunda, playing music from the high school. So that got a lot of folks' attention. I had one person who came up to me, back up a step. We were doing a display of noting the difference of Oskaloosa and getting legislators aware of what Oskaloosa's about, the Mahaska County area in particular, the importance of transportation and infrastructure. And so, to get their attention, we had the symphony kids playing in the rotunda, and that sound of those strings going up and echoing around. People were coming down and noticing that we had free cupcakes coming from Great Expectations, and we had some endurance drinks. I was gonna bring one with me and forgot to today, that we were giving away, well, as well, to anybody who would come and talk to us and offering them for free to the legislators. But they said the sound of those strings would just run a chill up their spine as they were listening, and they just had to come down and see it a little bit closer. So, worked very well. They also split up, and so some of them were in the senate chambers for the opening at 1:15, and then also at the House of Representatives at 1 o'clock, and they represented themselves very well there as well. So that's going on. The chamber is also intimately involved with the Roger Brooks efforts and the branding for the city of Oskaloosa. And so if anyone has any opinions regarding the things that are being said and concepts that are being presented, I don't think there's anybody from the chamber who would not welcome that conversation and input from anybody who wants to hear it. Moving on. Joint County Mahaska Disaster Services Emergency Planning Administration, that's you, Aaron.
Yeah, nothing to add.
Okay. Joint Law Enforcement Center, anything there?
No.
Mahaska County Agency on Aging.
The only thing there is that we are in need of board members. Anybody wants to volunteer, we meet once a month. We will be meeting Friday at 9 o'clock at the Agency on Aging. If anybody's interested in being a board member, show up, and we'll put you on. Other than that, that's it.
Does it compensate very nicely?
Oh, yes, pays well.
Okay, okay. Free lunch or any of that?
You can retire on that.
We already have. Okay. Anything else, or anyone else here on council?
See, Jimenez, what--
Quit it.
Oh. Stop.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I actually got something since everybody's here. We don't say it enough, but I just wanna say thank you to Marty Duffy for running your business here. You've done a great job stepping it up, and I know that we appreciate it as a community. And Wade's sitting back there. Your dad's sorely missed when we lost him in that motorcycle accident. I know Marty Duffy's looking at her, he's looking down on you. Thank you. Thank you very much for having that. I think it's a great memory for him. Everybody else out here, I know you all work together to make that seller work. I just wanna say thank you to all of you for that, because you make it a better place to live, so, thank you.
Well, green fence, Marty, green fence.
David, I got one thing.
Okay.
Pass one to everybody. I've had several complaints in the past few months on code enforcement, and most of them I direct to Mike. I did come up and talk to Michael about this one. I think this one's getting a little bit nitpicky. If you look at this picture and you see the house, and you look at the driveway going back, and you'll see a bird spot in the grass, right? Just be to the east of the house. That's where this guy parked his pickup. And he was given a ticket. I think it's, I don't think it was a ticket that he has to pay. I don't think it's a fine, I think it's a warning, that he has to move his pickup. Now, I'm not really sure why, whether it's because he's on the grass, which is his grass that he's killing, or whether it's because if there was an alley there, he would be in the alleyway. The alley runs right through there. That road is-- This is on G Avenue West. That's the street that goes right into the fairgrounds. This road that goes back there is, it's actually, I think, maintained by the railroad, and it's in access to their buildings, clear in the back, about two or three blocks back there. Nobody's complained about his pickup parking there. And I just think that's getting-- I think there's a lot more things in this town that we can complain about with code enforcement rather than this guy parking his pickup on his grass. Now, maybe Mike would like to add something to that, but that's just my personal opinion, and I just wanted to share it.
My comment would be, we're gonna continue to enforce the codes. We're trying to raise the standards of the community, and if that means that we're telling residents not to park their vehicles in alleyways or in the front yards or near the front yards on grass, that's what we're gonna continue to do unless council tells us to do otherwise.
Well, just to add to this, I, me and the wife drove around the first ward-- This is only in the first ward-- And I know there was at least 35 to 40 infractions that I, myself seen. I'm not gonna tell them where it's at, because I don't want them to go out and get these people all riled up. But there's campers parked on grass, there's trucks parked on grass, there's trailers parked on grass. And he also was found, found out that, from this guy here that talked to the code enforcement guy, that some of these places are commercially zoned, which would be right around where the bus barn is, if you know where that's at. And I guess the grass in a commercially zoned area must be different than a grass in a residential area. I guess you can burn that, but you can't burn your own. And I just think, I just think it's nitpicking. I really think it's carrying it too far. There's junky houses in this town, there's-- If this was a junky pickup with junk all around it, I'd go, I'd be 100% for it. That's not the case here.
I brought this question up, and he brought this up earlier. If I parked my car on my grass in my yard, am I in code violation?
Yep.
No matter how long?
Yep.
And I think there's a common sense here that should go along with that. I don't know if it's a code enforcement, if there's some sort of common sense that we can get in here. You know, I don't know where you draw the line, but I guess I was in violation this week when I put my car on my grass for five or 10 minutes. And what's the difference between that and a golf cart, or a four-wheeler, or anything else? Really, if you're gonna say that, if you're gonna go that far, then-- So I don't know if there's something we can do with common sense here or not.
Well, at the same time, he asked the code enforcement officer, he said, can I park across the street in my neighbor's driveway?